Happy solstice and welcome to Town Meeting TV. I'm here with Emily Brewer. I'm Lauren Glenn Davidian and we have a lovely evening of we're having a party, which you may be able to see for this solstice. And it's a lot of people have come.
A lot of people. It's a great turnout. I'm super pleased.
I'm gonna let you do a little bit of a recap. And then we're gonna have our awards with the Neighborhood Media Interns. It's an exciting show, so stay tuned.
Thank you, Lauren Glenn. And she's absolutely right when she says we've had a fantastic year here at CCTV and Town Meeting TV. Town Meeting TV has continued to shine a light on local democracy. This was a big election year for us. We had a bunch of forums for the general, the primary and the general elections. And we're making good project progress with our CCTV archives. We've digitized about half of our collection, which is super exciting. And she's absolutely right when making great strides. They continue to record and translate important public health messaging in 16 languages and their YouTube channel has over 80,000 views now, which is very exciting.
Hi, my name is Olivier and I've been in an internship for three years now. And my experience has been so fun, especially like getting to learn a lot in our community and everything, different people. And that's so basically just pick like different subjects like every week that we want to talk about and just go outside, record. And after that, we'll discuss about it. Yeah, so that'd be a very good experience.
My name is Navarro and I think what I really like about the media internship is getting to speak to people of our community that I normally don't hear from as well. Getting to talk with like all the really amazing people here, like Travis and you and stuff. It's just been really educational for me and just will help me in the future a lot. And also like getting to introduce segments and learning how to like talk on television. Stuff has been really interesting. And yeah, it's been a great, amazing experience.
All right, stay tuned.
Yes, stay tuned. Navarro's gonna stay on with me and we're gonna bring over. Thank you so much. We're gonna bring over Travis. And Travis is, what would you describe Travis as? He's your internship coordinator?
Our, our ringleader of sore hits is to say. And here he is now.
Hello, hello. How are you doing?
I am doing absolute fan-titly-tastic as I'm with Travis Washington, our CCTV internship coordinator. My first question for you Travis Washington is what was your favorite memory working with CCTV this year?
You know, it has always been like working with the interns and with all y'all has always been great mainly because, I mean, y'all are so insightful, yet intuitive. And you always come up with brand new ways to like, for me to think about things, but also like on how to create media. And I think that's really, really important. And I try to keep it as you-focused as possible because you are the ones who constantly teach me throughout every single one of our meetings and that kind of stuff. Like I have the information, but you are, you are fully doing the learning. And that's what I think is so cool. And that's what, I don't know, that's my, my favorite part of the whole year.
What do you think are your plans for next year of CCTV?
Well, you know, I hope that there's more interns. I hope that we can make more projects, have more projects be going out to all our fans out there at Town Meeting TV. And then, so I don't know, stay, keep a lookout for all the Neighborhood Media intern projects because y'all have some great ideas, you know. And you'll be coming up with some, you'll be coming up with some cool things that I'm excited to edit and excited to get out there.
Do you have any like specific favorite memories of this year?
Oh, I really, really, I really liked it when we did our, well, more recently, our Prop Two and Prop Five stand-up interviews. Mainly because I didn't know what we were gonna find about Burlingtonians and that kind of stuff. But you all learned the material really quickly and then applied it and was able to conduct really, really insightful interviews really, really quickly. And then that just, I don't know, that just really made me feel good because it made me like, it made me, one, have more faith in y'all. And two, like really realize that like, hey, y'all can do it. And I don't know, it just made me very excited.
What were some of the challenges of CCTV this year?
Um, you know, you know, it's, I guess there's not really any challenges that I would say besides, you know, tech issues are always arising and are always a challenge. But you know, it was a very busy year. We had two elections. We had the midterms as well. And then on top of that, I have, brand new as the internship coordinator for this program as well. So really adjusting and learning how to do that. And also learning for the first time, learning how to teach and have interns that and like keep the projects coming and coming up with ways to teach people and show people different niches and different really nuanced discussions that we have been having and I love them, so.
Well, thank you so much. And next we will have Chance. Get over here. You're interviewing people.
Welcome, Kelly, Kim, 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 welcome, Kim. Hi, my name is Chance and then I'm here to interview you today.
That's great. Thanks for being here.
We will miss you like, cause yeah, you're leaving. You was a good master control, like here's, yeah. Tell us some more, like what are you going to do like in futures for now?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I have a job and I'm gonna take in Montpelier. That's where I moved and lived now. And then I'm going to be working on my own business and building that. So I'm really excited about what the future holds.
So do you mean you're going to continue to do the same thing? Or it's just like something else?
Yeah, so I'm going to be working in copy editing, which is similar in a lot of ways to master control, but also different.
Oh, okay. I think we will miss you. So this is my things I'm going to give you for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chance.
You're welcome.
Next up, we got Olivier interviewing Sarah. Come on up here.
Hello, everybody. My name is Olivier and I'm here with Sarah from Vermont Language Project. Can you tell us more about your, like what you do and your experience working in?
Oh, yes. So I came on in August and I'm so happy to be here. I do a lot of, oh, I do a lot of production and get the videos and the audio ready for all the 15 languages that we translate health messaging into. Some of our translators are here tonight and Allison, our director. And yeah, it's been a great five months being here and I'm happy to be at CCTV.
Wow, 15 languages, that's crazy. So what are some of the difficult things that you go through a lot, like translating? Because that's a lot.
I'm not doing the translating. We have 15 trusted community members that do the translating and they send us in the audio. And then I put the audio with whatever video clip we're doing for that.
Oh, wow. Is it always easy like to find them or sometimes it's kind of hard to find the people to translate?
It's been the same 15 translators since the beginning almost. So for two and a half years.
Well, you also said that you've been working for five months, right? What's something that you were hope to maybe change, like to improve?
I'm hoping to just get faster and more efficient. And I'm excited to keep meeting people in the community. I've met so many people and it's been really nice. And so I'm just, I'm looking forward to that and excited to keep learning things.
Wow, well, thank you so much. That was nice meeting you.
Thank you so much.
All right, here's a happy Merry Christmas gift.
Thank you so much.
All right. Well, next person, all right, all right. Hello, my name is Olivier and I'm here with Jordan and sadly is leaving us this year.
Let's move, let's slide over.
All right, I think we're good now. Can you tell us a little bit about your experience working at CCTV?
I have loved working here at CCTV. I started here as a volunteer. I started here coming with like, just in a class, in a college class. And I loved it, sort of volunteering and I've stayed ever since. And I've just kept doing more stuff. And it's a great place to be. It's a great place to work and I'm gonna miss everybody.
Miss you too. Wait, how long you been working here since TV?
Four years.
Four years, wow. My second question is, since you've been working for four years and you're also leaving, what is something that you wish like to improve, like what can improve here? From your experience working here?
I mean, there's, there's always more to do in democracy and accessibility and bringing, you know, the government and bringing, you know, civic literacy to the public. There's always more to do. We have lots of like new people coming in with a lot of cool creative ideas. And so it's always just like keep, keep on bringing on new ideas and new projects and.
Also for your four years, did you have like a main job that you can actually talk about? That you, that was, what was your main job at CCTV?
Sure, I was, I was the channel coordinator, production coordinator. So I managed all of the video and audio production for the station. I started out as a field producer, just going out to municipal meetings and filming, you know, filming Burlington City Council, South Burlington City Councils, that kind of thing. Stayed on through the pandemic and then did a lot of the scheduling and management and training and all that kind of thing over the last two years or so.
Wow, that's amazing. I was gonna ask, like, when did you like start loving making a video and all that? Was it like when you were young or is that something that you ended up figuring out when you grew up?
Uh, high school. It was in high school. I, I didn't, I really enjoyed doing projects by just making a funny video. And I found that that was a really good way to get a good grade on a project. And so I started making those and I really fell in love with doing that. And then I had some mentors, Jim Shields, I'll call out Jim Shields, said like, hey, you could keep doing this. You could do this for a job, so.
Wow, well, good luck in your future, man. I'll miss you, Jordan.
I'll miss you too.
Wait, wait, one more thing. All right, Merry Christmas, man.
All right, thank you, Olivier.
All right, good one. All right, who's next?
Next, I will be interviewing community producer Sandy Baird. Hello, nice to meet you.
Interviewing me?
Of course, of course. So I know you're a community producer. What has been your favorite show you've produced this year? Or one of your favorites?
The other night, we produced a show with young black American girls who are advocating for the abolition of the incarceration of women and girls. And that was my favorite show that we produced this year. The woman that we worked with, the young woman that we worked with was a woman from Burlington, from an African-American family in Burlington, by the name of Kalia Livingston. And she was brilliant and she's the head of an organization, a national organization that is hoping to end the incarceration of women and girls and probably ultimately the abolition of all prisons, which is a very interesting and controversial idea. But it was, that's my favorite, yeah.
And what are you hoping for next year?
More community television, more public access, more citizens participating in journalism essentially, and a journalism that could change the world.
What are some shows that you're planning to produce over the next year?
Well, the next, in the spring, I'm going to produce with Dan Higgins, a longtime contributor to CCTV, a show on Nicaragua. I will probably do a show on the migration of Cubans from Havana into the United States. I am going to do a show interviewing the chief of police here in Burlington about whether or not there are rising crime rates and what we should do about it here in Burlington. So a blend of local issues, international issues as well.
How do you think that local journalism like this can shape the world?
Kidding, it's the only thing that can shape the world because it represents grassroots views of citizens. And really, when you're talking about big media, they don't represent us, the little people. But when you have something like this that's run by citizens, that'll, that is what's different about it. Because that gives us the view of ordinary people.
Wow, well, it's an incredible experience talking with you. Thank you so much. Oh, and thank you for the interview.
Thank you.
Pin that on. And next, oh, microprints. Next up, we got Chance interviewing someone.
Welcome, Dan. Hi, Dan. I'm coming to interview you today. So we hope to see you here. And what was your favorite place to doing things for the cameras?
Um, I guess my favorite thing would be, well, I love volunteering here because, you know, basically everyone's like a family. And, you know, all the staff are really nice. And I, I love running cameras. I used to do, before this, I worked at a TV studio in Bell's Falls, Vermont, named Fact TV. And I ran cameras there for about a year. And then when I moved up here, I wanted to get more involved in camera work. And so I started volunteering like two years ago. And I've been happy ever since.
Okay, so we have your gifts for Merry Christmas. Yeah, it's nice to meet you and yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's next?
Uh, Navarro.
Is that what I think it is? Yes, it is. We're about to interview Irene Renner, Senator of Vermont.
Hi.
Good, man. How's it hanging Irene Renner?
I'm doing great, thanks. What a wonderful party this is. May I just say, it's so nice to come to Channel 17 and not have that pit in my stomach, know I'm gonna be on camera very soon and I'm gonna be asked questions by a moderator and be up against fellow candidate, candidates in an election. This is, this is really nice to just come and party.
Well, I just want to ask you, how was your year?
It was a very exciting year. They redrew the map, so there were new districts to run for and I chose to run for one of them.
And what are your plans for next year?
I'm gonna be sworn in as the new Chittenden North Senator on January 4th and I'm looking forward to it. It's gonna be a whole new adventure.
What's some legislation you're excited about imposing? Not imposing, but putting in place over your course.
I, I don't want to go in with any preconceived notions. I know that people in my district are concerned about keeping the land and water resources looking like they belong in Vermont. We've had a lot of development in many areas. And I hope that we can keep the housing that we are going to build in dense areas where there already is sewer and water services. I'm in a really rural district, we want to keep it looking rural. And we also want to work on affordability for folks. A lot of folks are hurting with all the inflation that we've had recently. So those are the concerns I heard on the streets and so those will be my priorities.
What has been one of your favorite memories working in politics this year?
Going door to door. I knocked on doors for six months in a very beautiful region and I got to discover parts of all four towns that I'd never seen.
That's amazing. Well, thank you so much for talking with me and here's a pin. Thank you so much for your, ah, microprints, where did I put it? Oh, yeah. Thank you so much for talking with us and yeah, have a nice night. Enjoy the party. Next up, we got Olivier.
All right, Olivier is back again and with my guy Michael here. Hi, Michael, how's it going?
Good, you?
Good. My first question is, can you tell us a little bit about your experience working remotely?
Yeah, so basically I just am able to check in. We have meetings at 1:00 PM this time. I'm over on the West Coast. I'm over on the West Coast, so I have to like figure out the time difference. But overall, it's pretty seamless. Like I get the video files uploaded to Dropbox and then I pull them down and then they're on Premiere.
Do you feel like you're more connected to the job? Like do you actually feel like you're actually working?
Yeah, I definitely get to like check in with everyone over Slack. And every time we do a like Zoom meeting for the staff, it's really fun to just like catch up with everyone and see how everyone's been doing.
Wow, and how long you been working since TV?
Oh geez, I started volunteering in 2017, so I guess probably five years.
Also another question, like about just video in general. Is it like something you, you like wanted to do when you were a guy in high school? And like when you were a kid or is that something you guided growing up?
Yeah, I guess the first time with videos, me and my sister fixed the family camcorder. And so we just started making like skits of just like funny comedy stuff. So I've always been enjoying that and that's what I'm gonna keep doing, I guess.
And what is your experience being here today?
Being here, flew in for the holidays and gotta see all my coworkers, some for the first time in person.
Wow, all right, thank you so much, man. It was nice having you and I got something for you. Oh, I got it. All right, Merry Christmas.
Oh, thanks.
All right, good one. All right, Chance is next.
Welcome, Albi. Hi, my name is Chance.
Chance, good to see you.
Today I'm coming to asking you a question. What was your favorite memory from this year's?
All right, thank you for the question. To tell the truth, if I want to talk about my favorite memory in this place is when I came over here to talk about my music, because I'm a musician, I'm a music man. I was on the platform right here to talk about the kind of music that I deal with. I deal with the rumba, rumba music. I come from Congo. Then I wanted to let people from Vermont that there's somebody here in Vermont who's promoting and who's dealing with the Congolese music that is called the rumba. And I was very happy to answer all questions that were asked to me by Jordan Berrifield.
How did you feel when they welcomed you here?
Well, to tell the truth, this place is very welcoming. Most of the people that work on, I mean, here, they are very good people. They are very caring and they, they give you answers on every question you ask them. So they are very good people. So there's a good crew right here, to tell the truth.
Okay, thank you so much. It was nice to meeting you. This is your gift for Merry Christmas.
Nice meeting you too.
Nice to meet you too. Welcome, Navaros back.
What's good? Come up, our next contestant on the interview game. So what's, what's your name?
My name is Barry Silver. Yeah, what else you want to know about me?
What was your favorite memory of working at CCTV this year?
Oh my gosh, so, so I worked for CCTV and Town Meeting TV since 2015. And then my time ended in September of this year because I'm now teaching at Champlain College. So I was here for a while and, I mean, not as long as Lauren Glenn, obviously, or Megan, or some of the other long-term people. But what was my favorite memory? I don't know. I love seeing people like you come through the station and do amazing things and really help the community understand why community media is so important and how valuable a resource it is for young people, people of all ages and stages. So, and people who care about democracy. So, yeah, those are things.
Thank you. And what are your plans for next year? I know you're working at Champlain now.
Yeah, so I'm, so this is interesting. So I'm teaching two classes at Champlain. One is legal issues and communication. And actually Emily Brewer from CCTV has come as a special guest. Hopefully she'll come back again. Shay Totten, who's on the CCTV board, I believe, has also been a guest speaker. Lauren Glenn has been a guest speaker. So I'm, I, I want my students to stay connected to the resources that we have in this community like CCTV, Town Meeting TV and the Media Factory down in the South End. And then also I'm gonna be teaching an internship class. So I'll be working with interns. So that was something that I used to do as part of my job here at CCTV. So I'll be sitting on the other side of the desk, as they say, and I'll be working with interns and maybe placing interns here at CCTV. So, yeah.
And my last question, more varied is, whatever, is why do you think that community journalism is important?
I think it's so important because we need to make room for all voices in our community. And, you know, community journalism is independent. It is just, I don't know, really important for us to have an alternative to corporate media so that all of us can be informed about what's happening in the world around us, so.
Thank you, it was lovely to talk with you. And I hope you have a fun party. Thank you. Next up, we're having Olivier talking with?
Jane. Hi, I'm Olivier's back again and I'm here with Jane, our longest, what? Boring member, okay, okay. So was CCTV very important to you?
First, I want to thank you for not saying I'm the oldest board member.
That's what I was about to say. All right, so why is CCTV important to you?
Yeah, well, I wasn't elected official, I was on the Burlington City Council. And that was my entry into the world of CCTV because that's how the public found out what we were doing at their meetings, you know. And instead of reading in the newspaper, they could actually watch the whole meeting and know for themselves what happened and what they think about it. You know what I mean?
So basically, you were working for the city council and you thought maybe it would be much better if the people can actually get to see what's going on. And that's why I ended up making you work for CCTV?
Yeah, so that, you know, I thought I'd like to support this organization because what they're doing is so important in terms of getting information out to people. And I'm a big believer in people making up their own minds about things.
Me too.
Right? But then you need information. You know, you need to be in, you know, be educated about the issues and then decide whether you like what they did or not, you know?
Wait, how long you been working with CCTV?
I've been on 10 years on the board.
Wow, 10 years. And also can you tell us a little bit about how you feel everybody being here together for today?
Yeah, I mean, this is a great gathering and they're, they always bring people. It's such a mixed group, you know what I mean? And so in that sense, you get a sense of, you know, this is our community, you know? It's like it's diverse, but we are coming together around an important institution.
Well, I'll also ask you another question. Since you've been working here for 10 years, what is something that you wish to improve? Like you yourself, you're working on to try to improve here?
Yeah, well, I was the person who looked at, who kind of covered the finances, you know, and I was the treasurer on the board. So I think that, you know, maybe I would think more about other ways to kind of present the budget, you know, or to kind of make it a little more alive and interesting because it's just numbers on a sheet, right? So how can we make that come alive and like really explain, you know, why it matters that we're financially healthy? It is very healthy.
And also for me, do you feel like you get more, do you guys get like more support from the community? Because the only reason you work here is because to help the community. Do you feel like you get the same thing back?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I recommend, I'm getting off the board now, but you know, if other, there is openings on the board. So if people are interested in being on the board, they should, you know.
Please come outside and get a job. Well, thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed the interview.
I know more thing for you too. Well, Merry Christmas.
Oh, thank you very much.
Ah, no problem.
My husband will be jealous.
All right, my boy Navarro.
Navarro is back in the zone and we are talking to the curly-headed master of, what is it you do?
Development Director.
And what is your name?
Bobby Lucier. Nice to see you, Navarro.
Nice to see you too. What has been your favorite memory of working at Town Meeting TV this year?
Oh boy, well, Election Day was really fun and I know you were part of that too. We went out and interviewed voters and heard from them about issues like the Burlington High School bond and some of the important constitutional amendments on the ballot this year and heard about the candidates that people were excited about. And that was really fun, I liked that.
What were some of your thoughts on the election?
What were some of my thoughts on the election? Well, it was a really historic election. I think there was a lot of uh, there were a lot of new legislators at the State House in Vermont and there's uh, you know, a shakeup in the congressional delegation in Vermont and that's, that's pretty exciting to see. So uh, just seeing new voices involved in Vermont's democracy is really exciting to me. And um, it's exciting to be a part of the work that brings those voices, um, you know, up uh, to uh, to the voters.
And um, what are your plans for the future?
What are my plans for the future? Well, I am planning on working at CCTV, uh, Center for Media Democracy. And um, I really enjoy living in Burlington and wanna uh, wanna stick around here and be a part of the really uh, really interesting political culture here in Burlington. So that's my plan for the future. What's your plan for the future, Navarro?
Dying in the water wars. What are your thoughts on uh, when we start running out of water?
Uh, when do you think that'll happen? Is that gonna happen soon?
I'm thinking 2080?
2080. You think you'll be around for 2080?
Oh yeah.
Okay, I don't know, I don't plan on being around in 2080, so.
No, no wait, 2180. No wait, what is this year?
What is this year, 2022?
Oh, it would be, wait. No, it would be 20, you don't think you're gonna be around for 2080?
I would be, I would be 83. That would be pretty, pretty up there for me, I think.
Do you like do a lot of alcohol and drugs? Why would you die so quickly?
Oh, no, 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 uh, I guess I'm intimidated by the question. The water wars sound, sound like a big topic that I'm, that I'm not ready to to comment on yet, but.
What about the wonders of modern medicine? Like I think, I think I'll live like to 110, whether I like it or not.
Yeah, I think that sounds about right. You you strike me as someone who could make it to 110. I'm, you know, I'm feeling less confident in my abilities, but I'm glad that you feel so, so confident.
What are your thoughts on fellow curly-haired man Jack Harlow?
Uh, haven't had a chance to meet him, but I hope he's doing well.
And thank you so much for talking with me. He's out of the job, get out of here. Thank you so much. Next up, we got Olivier interviewing someone else.
Yay, let's go. Hello, Olivier's back again and we're here with the mayor himself.
Hi.
Hi, how's it going?
It's going great. It's good to be with you. Happy, happy holiday.
Yeah, happy holiday. Uh, my first question I was gonna ask, what's something that really went well in your job this year?
Something that went well? Well, um, we we got a lot of big, these big capital projects that we've been working on for years and years. Uh, we had some real milestones with them this year. We had Amtrak come back to Burlington for the first time in something like 70 years. The, this big highway project that's been this unresolved issue for a long time is in construction. The Champlain Parkway, we got the Moran Frame. Uh, I was just down there, just before coming here, there was another holiday party down on the waterfront. There was a Hanukkah party at the Moran Frame, which has been this big question in the community for decades. What are we gonna do with this old coal, coal burning plant down on the waterfront? Seems like we should be doing something great with it. We finally have have resolved that, gotten rid of that kinda eyesore. It's quite a beautiful space and I think in the years ahead, it's uh, it's gonna be uh, become a place where you'd have a lot of events like this, arts and and uh, entertainment events. So we got, we got a lot built and a lot moved forward this year.
Wow, that makes me really happy to see a lot of things that you guys done. Also, well, it's about the end of the year. What are some goals that you're trying to improve from the next year coming up?
For next year? Well, you know, we certainly are, um, I think in 2022, one of the challenging things about 2022 was the, the public safety concerns that that we faced. You know, we had this unprecedented number of gunfire incidents, a large number of more homicides than we'd seen in many years. And and you know, really this challenging period for the police department. Certainly, as we look ahead to 23, I am hopeful that we're bringing that spike of violence to an end. We're gonna start talking about the ways, how do we make sure that something like this doesn't happen again? And uh, I I certainly hope 23 is a year of progress. I'm feeling some momentum in the rebuilding of the police department and I hope that we see uh, some real progress on that in 23.
Alright, wait, how long you been working for me? What year, what year you going to now?
You know, it's uh, kinda amazing to to me how long it's been going on. It's I, this, I'm almost done with my 11th year, so.
Wow.
Been in, been elected four times, this is my fourth three-year term. And uh, you know, almost two, two-thirds of the way through this.
Wow, that's crazy. Oh, also also gonna ask that.
How long you been doing this for?
Oh, internship? This is my third year now. I started when I was a freshman.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, oh, I was gonna ask also, wow, being a mayor is a big job. So is it like something that you wanted to do like, maybe when you were young? Or like, is it something that just you came up when you were growing up?
You know, I was lucky to grow up in a family where we we had dinner together most nights. My mom and dad and I, two siblings and a lot of, most nights we would talk about current events, politics, what was going on in the world. And so I think uh, from a pretty young age, I did kinda have this sense that politics mattered and government jobs matter. And it's a, it's some way you can have a positive impact on the world is by uh, working for government. So I don't think I knew I was gonna be the mayor exactly, but it's certainly something that I uh, I I I did always sort of have my, think maybe I could contribute through public service in some way.
Well, I was gonna ask, what's some advice you can give to a kid who just maybe wish to be a mayor when they grow up?
Well, you know, what you're doing with an intern is is a, if you're interested in government service, that's a great thing to think about when you're in high school or college. More and more, you know, like the city has paid internships where you can come and uh, experience what it's like to be in in public service. That's how I got started.
Wow, that's very cool.
I was an intern in Senator Leahy's office 30 years ago.
You can actually see what he's doing and stuff or?
Uh, yeah, I was in the DC office, I opened mail and I uh, got to do some other kind of cool research projects.
Wow, that's very cool.
It was great to be part of that office. It really, I I don't think I'd be doing this if I hadn't had that experience. So I think young people really looking for those internship opportunities. More and more organizations uh, understanding that for these opportunities to be available to everybody, we really need to pay a stipend for that. There's a lot of paid internships around. Um, and I guess the other thing I would say is, a lot of people, even if they think maybe they wanna go into public service, they think about the White House, they think about Congress, they think about the federal government, maybe the state government. They don't think about local government often. And I gotta tell you, local government is uh, where, is 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 the closest level to our communities, the people. It's where in some ways you can have the most direct impact on people's lives.
Yeah, like you actually working to people in your community, yeah.
Very much so. So uh, I would say if you're thinking you might wanna be involved in, in public service in some way, think about, think about local government, think about the city of Burlington.
Wow, well, thank you so much, nice having you today.
Yeah, good talking with you, you too. Take care, good luck.
Alright, Chance is back in.
Hi, we welcome Jordan. Welcome, hi.
Hi, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. My name is Chance and I want to interview today. What was your, things you was doing this years and then for next year, what are you going to do?
Yeah, so part of my job is the archiving and the other part of the job is the production. And so this year it was a lot of uh, really big developments with our archiving work. We got a lot of archiving digitization done. We're halfway through, which is a really exciting milestone. And as we head into the new year, I think a big goal is bringing on a lot more community producers and really bringing the community back into the studio, um, to just create more content.
For the first time you get here, how did you feel like to be welcomed here?
Yeah, it's always, uh, always a very welcoming environment here. And when I first came in and first started working here, everyone was always so welcoming, you know, the staff, the community, you know, the interns and students, um, and just happy to see that continuing. And you know, it only gets better as I get to know people.
It was nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Olivier's back again.
Alright, Olivier's back again. And here we are with Andrew. Hi, man. Good to have you.
Nice to you. Alright.
Alright, so can you tell a little, oh wait, actually, how are you today?
Okay, what camera, where am I at?
That camera, yeah, you're good here.
Okay, do I have to talk in that?
Yeah.
So what's up?
How are you today?
This is a hell of a party. I'm having a good time. I have a, a show about politics, democratic politics. I reach out to a lot of younger people, new Americans, people living in town to register them to vote. Are you registered to vote?
Well, I wish, if I'm not 18 yet.
When do you turn 18?
In two years.
Okay, we're gonna, Emily? My friend Emily out here, the producer, the line producer tonight, thank you Emily. Well, I would like to tell people that um, it is so easy to register to vote. I am a very passionate Democrat, but we're not talking about that tonight, we're talking about public service. Also, um, Town Meeting Day is only a couple months away and that's when we'll vote on city council and on city issues. Let's, tell me a little about yourself before I go.
Well, I go to BHS.
Yeah, Sea Horses.
Yeah, Sea Horses, I play soccer.
Okay. Who's your friend over here?
Uh, my friend Chance, yeah, come in.
Come on out here.
Come in, Chance.
Come on, how you doing? Nice to you.
My name is Chance and I go to BHS too. Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Well, I have a question too. Can you tell us a little bit about your, your job and your experience working in the community?
Yes, uh, I work a lot of times as in politics, uh, registering voters, working on political campaigns primarily democratic. And uh, I lived in the Old North End for about 27 years. Yeah, for a long time. And uh, now where do you live, Old North End?
Actually, I live like right here, like one minute away from here. Uh, my other question.
Is there any place like the Old North End? No way.
Uh, I don't know. Alright, my other question is.
Oh, I have a question for you.
Okay, okay.
Tell me what you're doing this summer.
Well, this summer, I don't know, probably working on like getting ready for colleges. Just trying to, trying to check out some colleges, like where I can go after high school. That's my big plan. And soccer too, yeah.
Play a lot?
Yeah, a lot of soccer, yeah.
Play a lot of soccer and work on taking your SATs and stuff?
Yeah.
You gotta study for those. I don't know if I need to be on any longer, I I can be, or are we gonna go back to someone else here or?
Well, well, it was nice having you today. Have a good, wait, I got one, one thing for you. Alright, happy holiday, man.
Oh, thank you so much.
Alright, no problem, good.
I'm gonna put this on.
Alright.
Thanks, nice meeting you.
Alright.
I just wanna thank everybody at Town Meeting TV and this is a great Halloween party. Thank you Emily, thank you Megan.
Thank you.
Um, I, good luck, you studying hard?
Yes.
You too?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem, alright.
I'm gonna sneak on here really quick.
You alright?
And um, we've got a couple more interviews here before we wrap up the, um, our Alive Holiday Awards show. And um, next we have, um, next we have Lili, who um, is one of the translators for the Vermont Language Justice Project. And if you'd like to come right on up, that would be wonderful. Allison, you wanna come too? Alright. So we spoke to Sarah earlier a little bit about the Vermont Language Justice Project. But I, um, if Allison wants to do a quick overview and then we'll, we'll talk about your experience as a translator.
Oh, okay, so I'm the director of the Vermont Language Justice Project. And um, we employ 14 translators to um, translate uh, our scripts that we write. And uh, we put them together on a video and then put them out on YouTube. And they're on all subjects to do with health and health-related topics. And probably in January or February of this year, we were asked by a lot of people to include Mandarin as one of our languages. We hadn't at that point used Mandarin. And so my friend Weiwei told me all about Lili here, who um, is a good friend and is an excellent interpreter and translator. And so we started working with Lili to um, to do videos, uh, audio content in Mandarin for us.
So Lili, what was that, can you tell us a little bit about what that experience was like? Was it, did you find it difficult to translate the messages um, into Mandarin? Yeah, we'll start there.
Uh, I really enjoy it because I've been doing uh, translation and interpreting for the past 20 years. I did a lot of interpreting at the UVMC and also Duckman's Hitchcock Medical Center, Community Health Center, Fanny Allen Hospital and the local court in Vermont. So I really enjoyed it. So I am so glad to work with Allison, she's wonderful. And when I started working with this program, I really feel, you know, you can have a direct touch with the Chinese community. Because after I translate and share with them, I send each message to them, they all respond. Yeah, I think that's really nice. Because I think the voice translation goes so fast to the Chinese community. And the people really enjoy it because everybody have different education background. You know, if sometimes they don't have much time to read translation, but they can hear the voice. Yeah, and a lot of my, you know, like Chinese people work in the restaurant, they're really busy. They work very hard, you know, work a lot of hours and work like um, 365 days, only one day off. So, so once you send a voice there, they can really listen and they really, you know, COVID-19 and get catch up where to get a vaccine and how to test yourselves and how to protect yourself. They really enjoy it, really appreciate. So that's, I think it's really touched my heart. And they always, when I share with them, they always get back to me, says thank you. So, thank you, Allison.
Oh, you're so welcome.
Yeah.
Well, yes, and thank you for um, saying that because I think it's really important to hear um, how um, the project impacts local communities. And um, it, it really is, um, it's very heartfelt to hear that um, it's making an impact.
And also I want to say, because not, you know, in Vermont, not only in the Burlington, Venuski, Colchester and also some of the Chinese living in Montpelier, Westfield, Waterbury and like Randolph. So can share with them, you know, really they enjoy it, you know, the whole families. You know, sometime family have five, six people, grandparents, parents and the kids. They, they can hear, they can listen, they can go to the vaccine to get their vaccinated. So I think that's really nice. And sometimes they come to me, they say, where can we get vaccinated? How should we schedule the appointment? Where's the location? So I think it's really reach out the message.
Well, we thank you very much for being a part of this really important project and um, for um, being a voice for the local community um, throughout Vermont and beyond. And um, we look forward to continuing to work with you in the future to um, get more messages out in Mandarin as well. So thank you, thank you for being here, thank you. Thank you both. Yeah, that was great, that was wonderful. Thank you. Alright, perfect. I'm gonna bring Navarro back on stage and um, we're gonna do a couple more interviews and then we'll wrap up. So I'm gonna hand the mic back to you.
Last up, our last interview for the night, we got? Who we got? Alanis. Where are they? Come on, come on Alanis, where are you? Where are you? I need you, I need to interview you Alanis. Please, please come with me, come with me. Where, where?
Technical difficulties. You're so funny. Elaine's coming right over and then we're gonna, we'll wrap up our show. I, there's still quite a crowd here, it's very exciting. Here comes Elaine, right on over. I'm gonna hand the mic back to you.
Hello Elaine.
Hi, how are you?
Great, how are you?
I am doing great, it's wonderful to be here amongst the CCTV family.
And what has been your favorite memory this year with the CCTV family?
Well, I have been involved with CCTV for a really long time. And I was off of the board, the trustee board for a long time and I was invited back to come to the CCTV board and I'm thrilled to be back. I love CCTV and everybody I work with and I'm, we're doing great work, so I'm really happy to be here. So that's my favorite memory is just like coming back.
And uh, what are your plans for next year?
As part of CCTV, CCTV, I am um, Chair of the Board and we are working together with the staff to um, do some really big transitions and to continue supporting the amazing work we do, like the Archive Project and the Language Justice Project. So I'm really looking forward to expanding all of those great programs and keeping us strong.
So why do you think community journalism is important?
Because if we don't tell our own stories, they go away. And hyper-local news coverage is essential because stories are important in neighborhoods and in small towns. And with the disappearance of local papers and the lack of coverage of substantive local issues throughout the media in Vermont, we need to tell our stories as much as possible. And the people who are involved in them should be the ones who tell those stories. And that's why community media is so important.
Why do you think archival work is valuable?
It's our history. You know, when, whenever Bernie Sanders does something on the national stage, CCTV gets phone calls looking for archival footage of Bernie as mayor. It's our history. We have hundreds of thousands of hours of Chittenden County and Burlington history in our vault. And we wanna be able to have it available to people so that they can learn their own. And we want to be able to have it available to people so that they can learn their own local history. And it's recent, you know, since we've begun. It's an essential resource for everybody, not just for us locally, but for history and for local media who need to use those resources. It's a very, very important archive.
Well, it's been a pleasure talking with you and thank you so much. To another year of CCTV, happy solstice. Wow, it's been a wonderful night. We've laughed, we've cried, we've talked up a storm with so many amazing personalities from all over, the CCTV staff and Burlington community members. And I will be talking with you throughout next year as my internship continues. And I'm being told to wrap it up. Au revoir.